Where'd you go?
I was talking about the Estes.
Oh, yeah. That's nice. All right. Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith. Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September 4th, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the special work study session held August 13th, 2012. Item C is reappoint Charles Payne, Jeff Harvin, and Robert Washington to the parks board for three, excuse me, for a three-year term, both of them, all three of them. And let's see. Item D is accept a seventeen-foot roadway and utilitiesman from Sonoma Partners LLC, Justin Rhodes, located in the southeast quarter of Section 7, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being north of Northeast 12th Street and west of Sunny Lane. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $2,485,399.91.
Move to approve?
I have one, just one quick question.
Sure.
On the, I think I've asked this before, but on the boards and the different commissions that we have, do we, when those terms expire and the seat is available, do we just automatically reappoint those people or do we advertise and let other citizens of the community know, hey, this is an option if you're interested?
Yeah. What we've done in the past, if they still want to continue to do it, we basically let them. If there's an opening in it, somebody says they don't want to do it, then we post it for thirty days, I believe it's thirty days, on the city website, and we take applications and pick from there.
Okay. Well, and this will be for discussion later, but maybe we could, you know, consider just opening it and just accept applications and see who may be interested in serving and just trying to encourage others to be a part of their community in different leadership positions. I was just looking through the applications and one of the person's attendance wasn't very well. There may be a reason for that, health reasons, I don't know, but when you commit to serve, it takes time and you need to, if you don't have that time and if these people feel like, well, I just have to do it, no, you don't, but just let the community know, hey, there's opportunity if you deserve.
Sure. Reason we did it that way, used to, we couldn't get anybody to fill in.
Yeah. Well, there's fifty thousand of us here now, sure.
I mean, that's what it stems from.
Right.
And now we have a lot of people that want to do it probably, so maybe we should open it up.
Okay.
I'm open to that, if you guys want to do that, it's okay with me.
I would make a motion that we accept the consent docket.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion.
Yes.
In a second. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions, comments? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider approval of a lot split located in the southeast quarter of Section 7, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being north of Northeast 12th Street and west of Sunny Lane. Application by David Sitzinger.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This property is located east of Bryant, on the north side of Northeast 12th Street. It's abutting the Lost Creek Estates addition. It is currently zoned R1. That was done as part of the Sonoma Lakes addition. That was recently approved. The developer does wish to sell this particular piece of property to the site singers. They are the neighbors that are directly to the west. It would be abutting their property. There is a small existing building on the property. However, this application does meet all of the R1 requirements and staff would recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So this just adds to the property they already have?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve it.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number four is receive and approve the annual updates to the city emergency operations plan.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Annually, we are required, and not only are required, but it's a great practice to do anyway, we're required to update our emergency operations plan. That document describes the authorities and the principles that, on how we're going to manage large-scale incidents in our city. The entire document is available to you on the drive or the same server where you download your agenda at. And I apologize for not getting it up there sooner today. It is a rather lengthy document, it's a hundred and seventy-six pages long. I did provide you with a very short excerpt from the entire document. The front page of that is the table of contents, kind of shows you the organization of the plan. The real meat of what you're looking at is on the second page, that is a record of the changes that I made in this particular update. Most of those changes are rather minor, some of it is formatting, some of it, I added some highlights and some bolving and attempted to make it a little easier to read, added some maps here and there. I did make some significant changes in the sheltering area and also in the damage assessment area where we recently signed a letter of agreement with the American Red Cross to help us with damage assessment, and we've reflected that in this document. The rest of the excerpt that I have given you is the basic plan, which is about four or five pages, it shows the concepts. And then on the back of the document is, from the decision and control annex, shows the actual flow chart of how things work in a disaster. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Lot of work into that.
It's a document that started twenty years ago and I work on it every year.
And as one who actually reads them, good job.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work, just like you said.
Make a question to approve.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Thank you, Cam. Item number five is consider approval of a contract with Active Network for Recreation and Facility Program Software for the Moore Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $15,750.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this item is meant to address one of the deficiencies and one of the issues that was brought to our attention when we went through the master plan process. As you know, the public is becoming very computer-oriented and used to online registrations and doing research via online so that they can get information about programs and events. And so what this item is, is to get the community centered where you can register online for our classes, our programs, reserve pavilions and facilities, you'll be able to check availability of our facilities. It will allow staff to produce reports and determine high-usage times for our pavilions, what pavilions are used at particular times and days, and will be a great benefit to us. And so our ball leagues, our winter basketball league and our volleyball leagues, you'll be able to register for those. As an example, in the winter, if there's a winter event, this software will allow us to send out texts and emails to the ball teams and the coaches and let them know that the schedule has changed. So it'll be of great benefit to us. Active Network was very highly recommended, a lot of communities in Texas around the country use them. We got two other quotes from two other vendors, they were in the twenty to twenty-one thousand range, so we think we're getting a good product at a very reasonable price. So I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Is it budgeted?
Yes, this was a budgeted purchase. It was fifteen thousand, this is a little bit over, but we'll use existing money in the parks budget to supplement it, so, thank you, Mayor.
Sounds great.
Will this be an annual?
No, no, this is a one-time deal. They make their money through credit, when people pay with credit cards, they get a percentage of that, it's about two or three percent, so that's their annual, that's their fee.
Okay. Move to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Yeah, I didn't know that we didn't take, we didn't have any kind of program until after we started doing that whole process, and it's like, wow, that was kind of eye-opening because I just assumed, but good idea. Okay, with that being said, we have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is consider approval of amendment to the contract with Johnson and Associates for a traffic analysis and signals designed for Northwest Fifth Street and Broadway in the amount of $10,000 as part of the geo-bond project number five, Broadway Avenue from Northwest Fifth to Northwest Eighteenth Street.
Mayor and Council, this item is necessary due to the change in the scope of the project. I think it was two meetings ago that we changed the section from Fifth Street to 12th, from a four-lane to a three-lane roadway, and then we added signalization at that intersection, then we're gonna redesign Fifth Street where it ties into Broadway to make that southbound turn back west on the, off of Broadway onto the, more easier to, and more manageable. And if there's any questions or concerns, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I would just remember, if they could look at doing a flashing yellow, red lights during non-peak traffic hours, I don't know if that happens during this phase or whatever, but you understand what I'm talking about? For example, early morning hours, I know most people are home asleep, but not everybody is, and you pull up to a light and you're sitting there, maybe it could be flashing yellow, east-west could be a flashing red, west-south could be flashing yellow.
All of the, all of our signal lights work, or the majority of them work off demand, in other words. I think at that intersection, you're gonna see the green light on Broadway, most of the time, it's the dominant, the more traffic counts are on Broadway. However, if someone pulls up, it's gonna pick that car up and then it'll change. But I don't know that it's possible to have flashing yellow, I mean, from, you know, like midnight to six a.m. I'll find out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve this.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I did go and check those northbound over there on Fifth Street, that was three and a half minutes, that wasn't no minute and twenty seconds like I said. So it really is a long line.
Yeah.
Okay. Just so you know. With that being said, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number seven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held September 4th, 2012. Item B is rescind resolution number 23212 and approve resolution number 23312 due to a numbering error. Now, item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $1,221,561.51.
Move to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these? Everybody gets their claim, or get their claims questions answered, or any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number eight is consider authorization to negotiate with the city's current agents for 2013 insurance policies for property and contents, excess public officials, and employment practices liability, excess workers' compensation, and term life insurance for one or more years.
Mayor and trustees, we'll need to start working on our insurance renewals for 2013 soon. Staff recommends that the MPWA trustees authorize the staff to negotiate with the current insurance agents or receive quotes for the policies that were just listed for calendar year 2013. And this is the process that we've used for the last several years, and it seems to be working pretty well.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Is this universal? Are we authorizing universal?
Well, we're not, we're not accepting it right now. This is just a process on how we're going to do it. But yes, Universal is one of the agents.
Okay.
And they, if this is approved, they will go out and shop the market, then we'll, we could approve that particular policy once it is selected.
Okay.
Move to approve?
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second? All right. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number nine, oh, excuse me. At this time, we recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number nine is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting and held September 4th, 2012. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $130,401.21.
Move to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody get their claims questions answered, or any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Would you call the roll?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith. Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
Item 11 is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held August 20th, 2012. Your motion, we approve that?
So.
Second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Item 12 is our director's report.
Thank you, Chairman Kavner and trustees. Well, we've had a busy few weeks here at the City of Moore, and so if you've been watching KOCO 5, you've seen us showcased, and for that little bit of time, we sure put in a lot of effort and work for the amount of exposure. No, actually, it was fantastic. We did have one whole day dedicated to Moore, and that was last Thursday, but we did have them in town the prior Thursday all day long. But I, I think we ended up with about eight different stories, complete and total, as far as just things that are going on in Moore. And the interesting thing about that was it was a helping hands tour, so it wasn't just coming to Moore and seeing the great things that were here, it was actually coming and seeing the great things that our citizens are doing. What was incredibly awesome was the fact that I could have probably tripled the amount of story options that we did pitch to them. There are amazing things that are going on in this community. So thanks to everybody who pitched in on that, it was truly an unbelievable success, and it was a pretty big undertaking for our community, and everybody just did an amazing job. So we were well represented, and we looked great on television. We're all real pretty, so we look good. We have, and I think you probably got an email about this, but our last month's sales were the second, as far as retail sales in the City of Moore, were the second highest ever in the history of Moore, second only to Christmas shopping of last year. So if you think about the, everything's still here that was here last year, plus, we will be opening, grand opening Dick's Sporting Goods in early November, so those will hit our Christmas sales, holiday sales for the next month after that. We could be setting some records here with regard to sales in the city. So very exciting, lots of interest is happening. We are seeing quite a bit of movement with regard to real estate, specifically the property owner that's developing the frontage, the pad site right out between Firs and Discount Tires, which again has some fun leases that are negotiating, currently under negotiation there. I asked to be able to share those, and I haven't received word back, so I'll just say that it's, it's restaurant and it's family dining, and one is an Italian restaurant and the other is fast casual burrito-making kind of thing. Anyway, so that's exciting if all of those hold true, and he actually is coming out of the ground with probably ninety percent of that shopping center leased, current, already leased. So as soon as those are finalized, we'll be talking about those businesses coming in. He also is in the process of purchasing the land right behind him, right to the west of that. So the tract of land that's about five acres between Fort Thunder Harley-Davidson and Lowe's is actually currently under contract and will close very shortly. So that's tremendous. That property has sat there for, ever since I've had this job, nine, ten years, and been kind of shopped, but never truly, I don't think, developed and put out as an option for development. So really exciting to see some things possibly happening over there in that tract of land right next to Warren Theater. There'll be a lot of interest in that area. There already is. So again, Fritz Farm and Royal Park are all seeing really good lease options when it comes to putting information out. We had our ICSC event, the first, it's kind for Oklahoma, we had an Oklahoma-only International Council of Shopping Centers event a few weeks ago. There was a lot of great press about that, and we were very, it was very well attended, and Moore was very, very well represented there. So lots of brokers, lots of retailers there, and all know more about our city and our community probably than even I do. So it's exciting to be able to walk up to these folks and not even have to talk about, you know, where we're located, or they know the intersection, they know the traffic counts. The guy from Del Taco was actually doing like some kind of weird circles, he was so excited about having a potential store in Moore. So anyway, it's just, it's exciting to be on the national radar of some of these, of all of these retailers, and small shop space is actually doing extremely well. There's a lot of interest in businesses just moving in, whether it's local mom and pop or folks that have had businesses before, but if you look around some of this small shop space that's been empty for quite some time potentially, even in new shopping centers, if they go up with sixty percent lease, they're excited and happy, even fifty percent at times. But you'll always see a little bit of vacancy in these, especially new construction. Well, those are now beginning to fill in, and we're seeing a lot of infill in some of our older shopping centers. We just don't have a whole lot of older shopping space. So when people call and say, I'm looking for maybe a space, you know, built in 1970 with lower rent or whatever, we just don't have a whole lot of that. So that's good and kind of bad, but we have a lot of nice new space, it's just a little pricey. So anyway, but everything's filling in extremely well. I would be remiss if I didn't mention marketing and advertising and the things that we're doing just in public relations and the fact that our, and Todd mentioned it, as far as citizen and their savvy, savviness with regard to the internet and online, but we have had an all-time high with last month as far as hits on the website and our Facebook posts and citizens liking our Facebook page and following us on Twitter and who to thunk it, but it's incredible. And so anyway, just keeping up on that and making sure that we stay relevant and we stay transparent and always communicative with our devices is, is a challenge, but we're up for it and we're excited to have the opportunity for that. So I encourage everyone to get on CityofMoore.com and read more about the things that are coming up. We do have our Big Wheel Nationals that are coming up in two weeks, September the 29th, and if you've never attended one of those events, then you're missing out because it's a good time. And then, of course, getting into October are a lot of the events that are happening in the Old Town area. We have, Moore High School has their homecoming parade coming through next week, I believe, no, this week, actually.
This week, Jerry?
This week. And then, of course, in October, we have a lot of the community-wide events. So just be, visit CityofMoore.com, follow us and like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, and stay connected to what we're doing, and let us know if there's anything that we can do better to communicate and let people know what's happening in town. With that, I would take any questions or comments or concerns.
You might mention the two new pizza restaurants that are
I will.
Opening in town?
I will. One is open, and that's Marco's Pizza, and another great, thank you, Steve, for mentioning that, another great use of the former 7-11 building over on Eastern and Nineteenth Street. To have somebody move in, a tenant move into a vacant 7-11 within weeks after being vacated by the 7-11 with a brand-new one across the street, that's tremendous, and they've done a great job with rehabbing that facility. And good pizza.
He told us last night that they're on track to be the best opening ever for the first thirty days of any store in the chain, there's six hundred something in their chain.
We'll declare that right now. Let's just say that that, on track means it's pretty much happened. It's just already happened, as far as I can tell.
She said that. She told us when we were there Friday, they've just been slammed all the walls since they've been open.
So everybody on the east side who says, when's something new gonna open on the east side? Boom, there you go. And so everybody needs to order pizza pretty much every night. And not only is that coming, but also a good friend of mine from Norman is opening up Sandro's Pizza and Pasta, and he is opening, and shops at Moore, right there next to Cherry Berry, it's just a few bays down from Cherry Berry. And I think he will open within the next, I don't know, he's not as far along as Marco's was, but another good option for pizza and pasta right there. And that still doesn't have anything to do with the other new restaurants that's opening up, and they're more sit-down dining, so we'll have our fill of Italian here relatively soon, and certainly pizza.
Ilona Grill sold Friday?
It's sold, the restaurant did?
It is sold, and they'll be announcing in a couple weeks.
Awesome. Very cool. So lots of good space still available here, and, you know, primary space, and it's expensive, but it's, it's well worth it. People understand the, the volume that happens through here, so.
I think, hasn't Colin started on that piece there?
Yes, in fact, Elizabeth and I were just talking about that. The eighteen thousand square feet that will go from PetSmart due east, and it will connect in almost into where Sandro's is, so take PetSmart and then go east, and there's some dirt work being done right there, it's gonna fill in that parking lot. So we're at, now when you drive in, you can just see brush, but there'll be actual small you can just see brush, but there'll be actual small shop spaces, eighteen thousand square feet. Right. And that should start here very soon. And again, leasing is going well for that, and everybody's abuzz. So it's all, it's a great story to tell, and we'll just keep managing it and promoting it.
That's awesome. Now, for you guys to spend all the money that we just took in, we, we actually spent four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars more than we took in, so don't get too excited. I just did the math here on the machine. I was like, that's not good.
It's, it's a good time.
Yeah, it's all good.
Thank you, Deidre. At this time, we recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Let the record reflect that all the members that were present are still present. Item number thirteen is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There is no one signed up to speak. Would anyone like to? Okay. Item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Just had a citizen call and want to know about dead trees. We can, I'm assuming if they're in our parks or the city right of way, we remove those. If it's a neighbor's tree?
What we are going to do, Mark, is the one, this fall, this winter, we're gonna be removing dead trees in our parks and in the right of way. If they're dead trees in private property, we'll go through code enforcement on those.
Okay.
And people can call into code enforcement, and what we hope to be able to do as well, because it's gonna be an expensive process for some of these trees. We're going to try to see if we can find some tree contractors that will do these for reasonable prices for folks and even use a Terminator service to haul them away if they'll get them to the street.
Okay.
But as far as private property, they need to call into code enforcement.
All right. Thank you.
I have one item. I've had three or four calls from citizens. It says some of our employees are telling our citizens that we raised their taxes on park development last month. That the city council loaded to raise taxes. And it's like, I just don't want that to be known, but that's not true. So that's all I got. Thought that was strange.
Anybody else? All right. Item C is city manager, Chris Manager.
Just a couple of things to mention, Mayor. There's a copy of the actuary report at your desk. We'll have the actuaries here. I believe it's the middle of second meeting in October for that, just to make you aware of that. We've also received the preliminary audit from our auditors, and we'll get you a copy of that as soon as we get the bound copies. The audit was a good, clean audit again, so there's no issues there, but we'll be, those will be coming up at the two meetings in October. And also, just a reminder, a week from tonight, we'll have a study session upstairs and have the information on the drainage issue that Mr. Stoll brought to the council. We don't have a time set yet. I'm assuming six-thirty, but is that okay for everybody?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. And I also was gonna mention the KOCO event. Deidre and her department, all of our departments that were involved with that really did a bang-up job. That's one of those deals where whenever they first called and said, you've been selected, I said, oh, crap, because it's a, it's a lot of work. But, probably what I said, wasn't it? But it's a lot of work, and it really is a great thing for our community and a great honor for us. We had a lot of our citizens that voted or recommended or whatever they do, however they did that, asking Channel Five to come back. They came three years ago, and I think we really showed well then. I think we actually better this time in terms of showing for the community. And we've kind of gotten, I think, Deidre more so than, than me certainly, but it's kind of gotten a good rapport with some of the people with Channel Five, not only the anchors, but some of the people behind the scenes. And they are really impressed with Moore. So everybody watch Channel Five out there. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. There again, I'd like to say thanks, Deidre, you and Todd. You guys did a great job all year before. All the city employees that had anything to do with that, it turned out really nice. So I appreciate it. Item number fourteen is adjournment.
So moved.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
We have had people in the past vote, no?
I know.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.